Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to bring the July 9th, 2024, greater Park County Super Board Trust meeting to order. Ms. Markowski, all board members are present. If you all please would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item would be the approval of the agenda, board. I move we approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Ms. Sessions. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing them all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. The next item will be the approval of the previous minutes. The executive session and the regular meeting, I move we approve those as presented. Please have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing them all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. I don't believe we had any couple of comments. I think we have a sensational presentation coming up from Core.
Sensational.
I didn't smell any popcorn while I was in there.
I would have really enjoyed some popcorn.
Next meeting.
Yeah, so thank you for letting me present again. There's a lot of exciting stuff in here. I don't know if anybody was able to see this, maybe the sights will run or anything, but a lot of really cool things to talk about that are going on around the district, things we finished, things ongoing, just really cool stuff. So, as always, we just want to say thank you to all of our partners. I work with Room Law. I think you all know who we're working with here, and everybody's just been great to work with. It's been super exciting to see everybody collaborate as a team and just have a common goal, getting these projects done. Just a list of some trade partners here that do a great job. If it wasn't for these guys here, we wouldn't be where we're at. We really owe them all the hard work they put in every day. So, just a quick overview of the map. You can see at, you know, probably a year ago, we had this many projects open, and now we have all these completed, and now we only have these three currently remaining to finish up in this round of projects. So, it's really neat to see these things come to an end. Just a kind of an update on the schedule, you can see these ones here are completed. We got Charlestown Middle School, that's still going to be wrapping up here within the next month before school gets in session. River Valley just finished up. We got certificate of occupancy recently on that project as well, so it turned out really cool. And then the Charlestown Middle School in Pike, or Elementary School at Pike Elementary School, you know, just moving forward to that move-in date of next summer and then demoing those existing schools that are on those sites. Just a few photos from Charlestown Middle. You can see the band equipment in here. This is the choir room that we redid. Here's the new gym floor put in, logo is finished, all painted, looks really, really cool in there. This is an old bathroom that we demoed out with new tile, new toilet partitions, new fixtures, everything in there. Here we went onto River Valley. These are the new STEM classrooms that we installed. This is where the existing pool was. This is probably the center of the pool in all honesty, where this photo is being taken. What the new bathrooms now look like with your hand wash, same spirit toilet partitions. This is the entry to the gang restrooms with new tilework, new flooring, drinking bottles and things there. Here is the gym at River Valley. Again, that one, they look really, really cool if you have not seen them in person yet. Here's our new entry to that space as well. This was the old existing entry. We are now coming in through here. There's a whole new admin area where all the new classrooms are on the opposite side of that hallway. It's all new admin conference room, principal's offices, things like that. There's a reception desk there. So, when people come into the school, they will now enter a secure entry and then be allowed in. Few more photos. This is the locker room area. You can see it's a kind of a hard door to see, but there's the main hallway between the gym and the locker room. These are common area bathrooms back in here. I think there's six or seven bathrooms back there, and then next to the other locker room, it's the same thing. Here is where the old vest of you was that we pulled out at the front of the school. And then this is one of the locker rooms all finished up. So, everything did turn out really, really cool at that school. The high school, Charlestown High School locker room is 100% completed. Just some finished photos here of the concession area. You can see that looking out onto the field. Here's the football locker room here, the smaller locker rooms you can see there. Training room, bathrooms, everything again here turned out really, really good. And then some good site aerials of what it looks like now onsite. You can see in reference to where the track is at, kind of the front entry. Here's the concessions area you can see here, and then a good overview of kind of looking out over the football field there. Charlestown Elementary School. So, this school is really flying right now. They're doing a great job. You can see here where we're pouring concrete on our area key wing, which is our last section of concrete we need to pour. We are now done with all concrete as far as floors go in the entire building. All the structural steel is erected. The roofers are really going to town, getting that place dried in. We'll start setting those in about a week and a half. So, it's really going to start coming together from an outside perspective. Here you can just see some interior framing, mechanicals going in, drywall being hung in one of the classroom wings of the school. This is looking at the old parking lot of JJ. So, it's all done on how we got the curb work going in. We're going to be paving asphalt next week out here, so that way when they come back from school, they have another place to park again and that type of thing. So, really a lot of cycle going on, which is good to see. This is over the summer here. Here you can just see some mechanicals going in, the hallways of the classroom wings. All the brick going in. So, in between here, you'll see this will be all metal panel work and then kind of flanked by brick all around and above, looking really good. Here's a picture of the front of the school. It's a little hard to tell in this panoramic view, but this will be your main entry over here where all your admin spaces are at, your multipurpose rooms, things like that will all be kind of in this entry. And then here's your classroom. Here's a classroom in here. Down here's your classroom as well. And here's an overview of what it looks like from above. So, this here, make sure I'm right here. This here is your gym, and then your cafeteria area is right here, classroom in here, classroom in here, classroom in here, and then all this center area that's admin and library and things like that. So, really.
When did you break ground on that?
June 12th, I believe. We broke ground last year for this school. And then here's a really cool, I mean, this angle view of that. Quite a few overviews here from your own shots, because it's just really, really cool to see the expansiveness of the project and how far we've come over the past year. It's exciting to see. Here at Pike, they're in a very similar stage. The structural steel is not that far, but as far as critical path and the schedule goes, they're starting drywall on this school as well. So, they're very similar in timeframe from a schedule standpoint. You can see the brick going up here. This is one of the classroom, the classroom wing hallways. They're starting to hammer up the drywall at that school as well. Just some overhead roughens you can see here. Here, these are the roof trusses for the gym area, and then cutter, in stone, structural steel in kind of area C a little bit here and area E. Area C is the middle of the school, that they have in the school. And then here's a couple aerials. You can see this end of the building here is kind of getting roughed and people are starting to drywall on this side. Another good picture, you can see the skeletons over here as they're starting to move into those other two spaces. Here, they're setting steel. This is your gym here. You can see your gym wall is erected. And then here's the overview of that school as well. So, this school, we broke ground, I think, August 4th on this school. So, you can see that month and a half lag in the structural steel, but the important side of it is that on the inside, where it really matters as far as getting finishes and things done, we're running that in that right now. And yet Laura's got a little game that we're playing with two horses in each trailer. You can see which horse is pulling ahead of the other one every couple weeks. It's pretty funny. So, it's just a friendly competition that we got going on.
That doesn't sound very friendly. Is there something?
No, you'd be really, really surprised at how well the teams are working together. One superintendent's calling, otherwise they may be running into this issue. We're going to go look out for that one. They're just working together really well, so.
Those drawn pictures are pretty recent, because they didn't have the joints on the gym. Just recently, they dropped those.
Yeah, they were out, I want to say a couple weeks ago, they were out doing the drawn photos.
I can't believe it's been a year. Like, it feels like just yesterday.
It feels like so bad.
Yeah, it does. It does look really, really good.
Yeah, they're going to be amazing schools.
That must be hard to keep those restaurants looking like that. But he's not paying attention. That's usually me. I mean, that's my job, is not paying attention. But I said, I know it's going to be hard to keep those restaurants in River Valley looking like that, but, you know, as long as we can. I know it's hard. I mean, people are people. Restaurants are very similar. Those look really great.
And I actually had the pleasure of Nate and I. It's one of the reasons I dressed down today. We walked around both Charlestown Elementary, Pike Elementary, went inside, looked around. Yeah, Charlestown Middle, checked it out. Jeff, everything looks great. I mean, the space is in there, and just the work that Core's doing. I mean, well, if you want to walk through, just let us know, and Nate would be more than happy to meet you out there. Take a quick walk through today. Try to take a dry day instead of a muddy day like we did today.
The layouts look very similar to the two schools. Is the student population, I don't know.
The Charlestown Elementary is a seven-section elementary. The Pike Elementary is a six-section elementary. So, Pike will hold somewhere around 900, 950, whereas Charlestown will hold over 1,000, close to probably 1,150, close to 1,200. It'll be one of the bigger elementaries in the state of Indiana.
Any questions? Yeah, thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's keep moving. The next item for approval would be the consent agenda. Board, do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Sessions. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or comments?
Again, I want to thank the board and Mr. Loughner for allowing us to just approve the consent agenda like this, because, you know, looking at, of course, we all look at this, you know, before we come, but just allowing us to do it this way. I do have another question. Dr. Hartlidge, student athletic handbooks, anything, student handbooks, athletic handbooks, anything jumping out?
No, it's predominantly all the same, but they update the dates and the seasons. And in elementary, they have the specific dates in there. So, Karen was very close to Lori Gavin to work on that, and Melissa, of course, will be athletic director. So, nothing.
I know in December, we added soccer, softball, and baseball. Have those been added to the athletic handbooks?
Yes.
Okay. Any changes we made since December regarding grades or anything on this?
You know, based on the state code that was passed, legislation, you know, attendance, the cell phone policy, we had to tweak some of those things a little bit, you know, that are in there now. So, we were already pretty much in line with what the state passed anyways in those two areas with attendance and the cell phone policies.
Dr. Hartlidge, you may know this and may not, you're acting like the consulting agreements, those are cutable, aren't they?
Yes. Yes, they are.
This is all I need to know.
And the highlight, the changes in each handbook are highlighted. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything or miss anything.
No, they, I've done those in the past in my department, but it may, Dr. Wesley said, you know, it just makes sense. We should work with them closely. And so, she's basically gone through and just updated, you know, any changes in the school launch or specific schools, specific items. And then we also look at district-wide things that we just need to clean out or reorder or provide clarity to, and make sure that it aligns all of the policies that are quoted in there aligned with the new student rights, which we approved earlier this morning.
Thank you. And thank you for the highlights that makes it easy when you have to compare it to last year.
All right. Any other questions, comments? If they're all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, moving right along, sadly.
Sadly, again.
We have no guess to build it.
The name was no.
When we move on to action, the first one is the 2025-2026 school calendar.
Good evening, board. It's nice to see you. I missed the last meeting due to vacation, and I've always enjoyed seeing all of you and all of the progressive things that are happening in our district. So, it's good to be back. This is our school calendar for 2025-2026. We're thinking ahead, and the administration collaborated with stakeholders to develop a calendar that reflects, it's pretty much identical to our 2024-2025 calendar. Where we made those changes, it was intentional so that we could start a little later and get kids out of school sooner in May, which works very well, because once the assessment season is over, there's just, things begin to happen, because people aren't quite as busy as they were with kids, and we see sometimes an increase in behaviors and so forth. So, this has worked out very well for us. This first student day would be July 31st in 2025, with a concluding date of May 22nd in 2026, and that would be the last student/teacher day. This does include three teacher-only professional days, and there's one week each for fall break and spring break, and a two-week break for winter break.
Okay.
So, we're going to see if you approve.
Okay. Board, do I have a motion for the approval of the 2025-2026 school calendar?
Mr. President, I move that we set the calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. President. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. President. Any questions, comments?
You, May 20th is last student day, right? You said May 20th, okay.
Well, that might be a typo.
I just clicked on what was attached to the.
Do we want to look at?
Forty-four.
Because it says graduations. I don't want my reading glasses on. I'm at that point in my life.
I'm right there with you. It is May 20th. I'm going to fix it right now. We're all sitting right here in board docs.
Thanks. I just want to say how excited I am to have the kids getting out before Memorial Day. Because I was taught at Jeff High the year it went until June 19th, and it was hell. Happy birthday. Belated. And so, that's nice.
Thank you. But just if you go back in time, a year ago, when we approved the 24-25 calendar, we discussed this a lot in terms of going back to more of a traditional calendar. A lot of the intention on that was, we got a lot of feedback from like our elementary teachers, that said having two weeks off is too much. You know, when the elementary kids take two weeks off, it's like they're starting over. One week would be much better for fall break, spring break. And also, we got a lot of feedback on, you know, if we would have stayed with a balanced calendar like this coming year, we would have started like January 23rd, or sorry, July 23rd, 24th, or something like that, which could be way early. You know, we had a lot of feedback, let's start in August if we can, or as close to August as possible, and make sure we get out before Memorial Day. So, we're trying to accomplish a lot of different desires that people have with the calendar, but not only parents, but also teachers. And then also, what's best for kids? I mean, when you look at academics, is it best for kids to take two weeks off, you know, when we know we're trying to increase our I read scores, you know, for fall break or spring break? When we're working on those type of things, you know, two weeks of downtime and having the brain in the back after two weeks to start over is essentially, is that what is best for kids in terms of trying to get students to read? I think our cabinet's in agreement that no, that's not, that's not what is best for kids. Well, after the testing too, once they're tested, they're kind of down, and the teachers are kind of down too. It's a slippery slope, but I think it's the right one. So, okay, all is in favor of the approval of the 2025-2026 school calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, next is a memorandum of understanding.
New Washington Middle School and River Valley Middle School have been selected to participate in a research study on the teaching fractions toolkit, and we were approached from the Regional Educational Library Midwest that's managed by, or which is the American Institute for Research regarding this particular kit. And they want to see how, as they train teachers, how that will impact instructional practice and student learning. So, they, this is at no cost to us. It is funded by the United States Department of Education, and they want to determine how well that toolkit works. So, as part of the project, our participating teachers will receive 25 hours of professional development from the REL Midwest staff members, and this contract has been reviewed by Church Churchill and ADRM, and we are excited about this opportunity.
Board, I move we approve a memorandum of understanding between American Institute for Research and River Park County Schools. Can I please have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments for Dr. Hartlidge?
Grade six, Ellen?
It is, yes.
You don't start teaching fractions in the sixth grade. Wow, six.
Well, that's just, they came to us and approached us about this opportunity, and if we see that there's some really good results and outcome, then certainly we'll consider it. So, it's, for us, it's somewhat of a pilot, and it's expanding our teachers' knowledge. And, well, you know, the data, the proof will be in the data to see if that's something that we need to bring down. And we know from fractions, a lot of difficulty kids have is their number sense, and do they understand multiplication and the arithmetic and addition? And so, all of those things that we have to hit early on with the number sense piece and the trajectory of the standards. So, the middle schools were interested in, because this is an area they know that once kids get there, they don't always have a solid understanding. So, it's a hands-on, and it really is going to break it down for them, and we are going to provide some additional intervention. And hopefully, our teachers will be, will build their toolkit as well. No pun intended. But, so, if it works out great, then it's something we'll consider to put in the A grade.
Again, I'd like to, when we get it, it's up and running now, we'd like to go to other schools and see.
Sure. I knew you'd be interested in that.
I really like the fact that it's diverse. I mean, we picked two really dissimilar school populations, and maybe they picked them, I don't know. But I'm all for it, and I just love the cause, you know. So, anyway, all is in favor of the approval of the MOU between American Institute for Research and River Park County Schools, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, moving right along.
This is a consultancy agreement with a company called Tajou Educational Solutions for Parkwood Elementary School. As you know, we have been grateful recipients from the Parksville redevelopment of money to support economic, a program that would enhance economic impact in Parksville, and we have received some TIF dollars and for planning of a dual-language immersion program. Teams of our teachers and staff traveled this summer to California, saw some very diverse schools with variety of different program types when you begin to launch something like this. And Tajou is a company that will aid with program design, implementation. They will help us do the preliminary steps to develop the systems and get it up and running and have sustainability. So, we are excited about this opportunity, and we know that dual language will be an asset, as it will immerse students in their native language and also a second language at an early age. And this will be funded by that Parksville redevelopment grant. So, basically, they're going to be consulting us through every step of the way. They were highly recommended by Indiana University as well, and have worked with several of these schools they visited this summer.
Board, do I have the motion for the approval of consultancy with Tajou and Parkwood Elementary School?
I move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Mustang. Any questions or comments?
I am so excited about this. I was talking about this the other day, and the whole like bilingual, like that is just so much for both groups of those kids.
It's a great place.
And we are anxiously waiting on hearing about our submission of the SIC School Improvement Grant, which would be a significant amount of money to couple with this. So, more things to come. But it is a great opportunity.
When do we think we're going to?
We don't know. We thought by now, but you just never know. Hopefully soon.
Any other comments? If you're all in favor of the approval of the consultancy with Tajou and Parkwood Elementary, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, insurance real information 2024. Ms. Schubert, how are you?
Really good, Mr. President, and I hope everybody's doing well tonight. It's a tiny year for general operating insurance, which is property casualty, auto, et cetera. Workers' comp is in January, so this is the front of the whole district. We're at risk this year, I'll be honest, because our plumbing industry, this particular year, smaller miners, we did have a, most of our crash, those are the kind of things that they do go back and look at. So, we, with our current areas, we're using Liberty and EMC. And so, the difficulty is when you're trying to get quotes or these things, they wait till the last minute. We're risking a 30% increase in all of our policies had we stayed with the Ems. The insurance industry, as had been explained here before, it's not just our claims that also come into play, it is nationally. So, the weather that we've had, and across the nation, so those complaining into the overall insurance company, the Liberties, the EMC, anybody, they have to make sure that they have those funds right nationally. And so, that comes on an individual basis, in your own personal insurances, as well as the schools. But Liberty Mutual did order all of it, and it come in with a 3% increase, which we are extremely looking. So, it's my recommendation that the board approve our general operating insurance as the board to Liberty Mutual.
Board, do I have a motion for the approval of our general operating insurance policies with Liberty Mutual?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions, comments, Ms. Schubert? Okay, hearing them all, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. All right. Donation of new school board, Jeffersonville Soccer Field, $2,000.
Yes, so it's always my honor, I always deliver good news. I'm pretty excited about this. So, again, thank you Mayor Warren, and a repelling commission to take care of our wonderful Jeffersonville High School. I'm like, I'm like, has been giving attention, of course, and he's very aware, very excited about the movement that this board has made. So, you know, part of our five-year plan was to redo the Jeff High Soccer Field, and we had, and this team decided that, well, if we're under soccer field, we should have a new school board. So, they are donating $20,000 to our district that will come in to help with us on a new school board. And we're going to be pricing that out and making sure, I'm going to say that our school board will cost just $20,000. Well, the boards are not inexpensive, but at least this is very helpful, and we definitely want the best for our kids. He's in line with this board to make sure that happens. So, we're very thankful. I'm excited. It is my honor, you for this board, to ask for approval to accept that $20,000 donation for new school board at Jeff High Soccer Field.
Board, do I have a motion for that approval?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or comments?
I know that kind of alliance was the comments that we heard about the new soccer field. They really wanted a school board, you know, to address things up there. We're also, I think, asking about P A. So there's our sound system and also dugouts.
Yeah.
We do have a quote for soccer dugouts that are sort of unique looking. Everything's coming together.
They're sprayed out of porta potties. They just paint them.
I'm sorry. I thought that was hilarious.
Okay, all those in favor of the approval, the donation for $20,000 for new school board from Jeffersonville Redevelopment in his office, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. All right.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. Nice wonderful time tonight. Board comments, Mr. Jones? Would you mind giving us that date on your dog?
Oh, I'm better. Still wears out easy some headaches, but she's backed up activities. Still got a neck brace on when she's doing activities the other night. She's been correct.
Good, thank you.
Thanks for always sprays and checking on her all the time. You're correct. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Hudson?
Nope.
Not a thing. You didn't do just the buildings?
I didn't do just the buildings. That's really sad because I do like the sound of my own voice, especially in a microphone.
There you go.
I am ready for school board again. I did announce all that summer prior.
You forgot.
I forgot to announce it, yeah.
Well, there you go.
All of us are ready again, right? I'm ready, but.
I don't need to.
I was about right, catching ahead.
Would have sounded the same, bro.
It's like steel, bro.
No worries, Eddie. I'm sorry. Thanks for getting that. Mr. Paul, do you have anything you'd like to say?
The only thing real quick is that this is, oh, how can I say this? Many states around the country are starting to kind of draft some legislation using some interesting words. Things like anti-tenure agreements, which is another nice way of saying it's an anti-diversity, equity, and inclusion legislation. But they don't want to call it that. So they just want things to get ahold of our state senators and tell them, no, we don't need that kind of stuff. We want to protect our educators and all that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Stane, anything?
That's mine.
Okay, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, so I participated in these Cities of Independence Day Parade just last week. And of course, I had a spot in the parade and I planned it out, tried to get everything completed as the way I wanted. And everything that could go wrong went wrong. But I had fun. It was a really cool experience because I never had a spot in the parade, pass out candy to kids.
Wait, what went wrong?
Oh, everything.
Wait, did you die?
See, people were late, people who weren't going to be in the parade with me showed up. People that were supposed to be in, didn't show up. But it was a cool experience, so. Like, I still enjoyed it. Wouldn't change anything to have fun. But yeah, it was a cool experience, but yeah.
Awesome. Did you get any candy bars?
No, because candy bars, it's a hot day and they were melted, so we had skittles. Well, we did not do full-size. We just did, you know, the fun size ones.
Because full-size hurt me in bang.
It's all here.
Did you have a float or car?
Car, my dad's Corvette.
Nice. Okay.
Okay, I don't have anything to say. I appreciate Smith, your email and concerns there. Being on that side of the table when things change sometimes, you know, I know how it is. I just, it's like the temperature in the room or in the school building. Somebody always wants it 72 and somebody always wants it 68. Somebody always, you know, it just, you can never make everybody happy. I appreciate you and the teachers hanging with us and I know it's gonna take some doing, but I have a little conversation that went about with several people and two years ago they were upset about the calendar. And then halfway through the year, they were so happy about it. You did a great job with that. I reminded them in their chat, here's what you told me. Anyway, but thank you for doing that. Thanks to teachers for hanging in there with us.
Mr. Waller?
Well, and I wanted, to that point, wanted to remind the board and also make note about something we discussed over the last several months in regards to, because this is starting to come back up, of course. And we're gonna send something out Monday in our welcome back letter to the staff that about the 10 minutes and adding an additional 10 minutes on to the certified staff workday. That is something that we'll put in the welcome back letter and explain, you know, number one, that we're doing it and also why we're doing, you know, there's a few different reasons why. We've talked about it for almost a year and a half, two years, and why we've come to the conclusion that we need to do it. One of them is safety and security of students at dismissal time. You know, making sure we get our students out of the building and on buses, to cars safely. The other thing, as we were researching this, we found that some of our schools had longer zero periods than others because of the schedule and we wanted to correct that. So that every, as you know, three zero periods a week, you know, we're doing professional development with our teachers. And we want to make sure that each school has the same amount of time to have professional development, you know, with each other and collaborate. And then the other thing we found as we were researching this, Karen and Kim found was that because of dismissal times and trying to get the students ready for dismissal, we were actually losing some instructional time at some of our elementaries. You know, because they're able to shut down instruction so that they can get kids ready to get to the cars, get to the buses, things like that. So that 10 minutes will also help with that, you know. And so we feel strongly that that needs to be done. We understand change is hard. Some teachers do that, certified staff, that is upsetting, you know, but we do feel like it'll benefit our students and also benefit the plans our principals are making in terms of keeping our students safe at dismissal and arrival. So just wanted to make everybody aware that, you know, we're gonna send that out next Monday as far as the letter we usually send out each summer to staff as far as the welcome back. But they should know that that's coming in terms of adding an additional 10 minutes to the certified staff workday.
Okay, anything? Okay, a new motion?
I move.
I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Anybody against that? All right, we're done.